In this hall, in seeking ways of this, the way out of this quagmire, as we uphold the tenets of democracy. This is the very first time we have eminent Nigerians sitting the premier position, coming to honor such a town hall meeting. And we thank you all of you, you have been with me to be here, to come and let us know your plans for the nation. I wish to thank all of you for honoring the call. And as we proceed, let us remember that today, we are all part of government. And the outcome of all discussions will be expected to be delivered in future policies. The University of Lagos is indeed proud to meet a Pardiana university, to bridge the town and the down device in a matter such as national, of national importance. Such as house. And is also proud that several of the eminent candidates that have entered in the, at the student, teacher, administrator of the university. The university is also particularly glad that this event is being carried out in collaboration with University of Lagos Centre for Housing and Sustainable Development. This, this, this centre is one of the growing number of centre of excellence which the University of Lagos has launched in its agenda for innovation and advancement in development of country in all its spheres. It is with this brief remark that I declare this event open and welcome you all again to this event and look forward to a highly beneficial town hall meeting. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you so much, sir. Let's appreciate the vice chancellor. Thank you. Let me call on Mr. Shekou Awusai to come forward and give the house the proof. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I stand on existing protocol. Before I start with the house rules, I just need to, I want us to put our hands together better than ever before for the candidate sitting right here. And I said that principally because we are all aware that it takes approximately a month to get people of this calibre where they are sitting. And we did not start a month ago. So our invitation came late and because of that, most of them have to break, you know, their campaign to be here. It's a huge sacrifice. You put your hands together. What differentiates us from other animals, apart from what being social animals, is because we have rules that are written down. We've been used to debate, we've been used to having candidates come together and we hailing, garing, shouting, giving side comments and the rest. But this is different. And because of that, we need to let you know the rules that apply from this moment. Serility is declining in our socio-political space globally, and Nigeria is no different. I'm sure you know that already if you're on social media, if you're watching TV. And we seem to have lost the capacity to have constructive conversations about things that matter. Across our communities and gatherings, political, religious, social or academic, regardless of the theme, people mostly are not interested in finding agreement and some even attend public events with a goal of starting an argument. We are happy to announce that we don't have people with such demeanor in our midst today. Suffice to say, tonight will be historically different. This meeting is about ideation. The creative process of generation, developing and communicating new ideas, where an idea is understood as a basic element of thought that can be either visual, concrete or abstract. Ideation comprises all stages of a thought, of a thought circle, from innovation to development to actualization. We are rubbing minds and weighing hearts. We are raising argumentation without being argumentative. The formal demonstrates the will to contribute meaningfully with decorum from a graceful heart and from a depository that elicits a deep wealth of knowledge, while the latter will be emblematic of a chronic internal misalignment and social maladjustment. We hereby, we hereby, if you want to clap for the candidate and the organizers, you can clap. We hereby implore all participants to, first, participate with intention by religiously adhering to the rules and issues at hand, which is state of housing market in Nigeria. We are not talking about Bokoram, we are not talking about Lasma, we are not talking about the military, we are not talking about any other thing but housing. State of Nigeria's housing market, strictly. We are eager to explore, we are eager to listen to you, we are eager to know where we are coming from, to be enlightened about where we are, and be guided on where we hope to be and how to get there from each candidate's perspective. We want to hear and learn from you. Appreciate the diversity of perspectives by employing the channels of wisdom based on your experience, while we implore the supporters in the audience to maintain decorum so that we can win time. I think we understood that in plain English. And also, the kind of meeting, this kind of meeting was not designed to support argument, but learning with shared understanding. Maintain a respectful space. We all deserve respect and kindness. It is not about who is right, but what is right. We strongly believe our prejudices have been checked outside the University of Lagos gate upon entry. Digression from the issues will no doubt necessitate the troncation of transmission from your microphone. Stay on topic at all times and be as brief and as direct as you can. It is your individual manifestos we are discussing as it relates to the issue at hand. You are communicating with the people and not merely talking to each other. So let us prioritize Nigeria and Nigerians by focusing on housing markets and your plan for Nigeria on theme. To the audience, Asian devices, that is Chinese phones, especially those that miraculously ring like fire alarms, while on silent mode, should not be used at this time until we are done and safely outside the premises of University of Lagos. Having taken care of the procedural necessities and elucidated the ground rules, I take it that the terms and conditions we often skip on the other platforms are duly understood and acknowledged to this regard. Let me hand you over to our eminent moderator, distinguished Mr. Roland Ibinyoba, the founder of Roland Ibinyoba Real Estate, Royal Foundation for Housing and Urban Development, and Dr. Tybert Lowensen, co-director, Centre of Housing and Sustainable Development in L.A., for this session. Do note that clarity is not achieved by circuitry or surplusage. Bravity is essential, and extension of thought beyond the time allotted will neither be excused or violated. The post-event report will follow Chatham House rules, so you are free to express yourself. We also welcome your manifesto as an attachment after the programme so that we can have a robust documentation which we will share with you and share with Nigerians. Transformation begins with cultivation of character so we don't expend scarce resources on duty on managing our things. I believe you are all complacent. Thank you very much. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Seja. Okay, we're starting off business on the town hall. Now, while putting all of this together, we acknowledge that most of the candidates have proposed housing interventions in their manifestos. So the questions that were drawn were basically, like I said, hold on. Each candidate has about two minutes to respond to each question. Dr. Adeemi is right over there, who's our timekeeper. Dr. Adeemi, please. Okay, Dr. Adeemi is going to let you know when he starts seconding to your, to the end of your two minutes, and then he will stop you at the appropriate time. So I think Tyba wants to let us know some of the places where we have gotten questions from.
Good evening, everybody. We have received questions from the Nigerian Institute of Quantitative Statistics, Nigerian Institute of Town Planners, Spaces for Change Organisation, the University of Lagos Department of Asset Management, the Centre for Ethics and Sustainable Development, the Lagos State Ministry of Housing, the University of Lagos Centre for Housing and Sustainable Development, various hubs under the Africa Research Universities Alliance, Centre of Excellence for Organisation and Habitable Cities, the Higher Rich Ball Foundation, Artic Infrastructure, and close to 100 questions from social media, Facebook, Twitter and Instagram.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tyba. So we'll go right into the question. Our first question today borders on land. The review of 1978 Land Use Act is long overdue. As presidential candidates, what specific sector of government takes to exit an act from this constitution and ensure its speedy reform in order to assess, in order to have easy access to land for housing, especially for the low and middle income? Thank you. This is going to be our core approach to the Land Use Act. Thank you. Dr. Obi.
I think that the core of that question goes to the challenges of building consensus on what to do with the land act. There is no doubt that it will be politically difficult to get everyone on board, the necessity for us to overturn that act because of the barrier that it has created. The economy. That data is going to bring more people to the table to do something about that act than merely telling them that we want to repeal the act. Having shown the evidence to the different stakeholders, the most important thing is going to be an acceleration process for actually evacuating that act and putting in place a new system of access to land that is very transparent, that is very efficient.
Thank you very much, your host. Thank you very much. Your time is up. All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I want to apologize to students who are here that the two most prominent candidates, APC and PDP, are not here because they caused the electoralists to go on strike and have.
Mr. Shorere, you have only two minutes.
No worry, I have two minutes. I will address you in two minutes. Uh, thank you. I have said it and I repeat it here that the unitary thing that you saw that the military brought onto Nigeria started in 1978 when it smuggled the Land Use Act into the Nigerian constitution. That was done by Obi's father, Oluseku Abasunjo. And since then, no worry. Uh, Dr. Obi, man. Since then, this country has not had any progress. What we need is to return to land ownership. But we must be careful not to return to the kind of customary ownership of lands that we had in Nigeria before independence, in which just a few people own lands to the extent that the majority are left without land. What I would do is go after the Nigerian constitution, the 1999 constitution, which is the fraudulent documents imposed on the Nigerian people by the Nigerian military. That document must be spawned by the will of the Nigerian people and be replaced with a living document that is discussed, debated and deliberated by the Nigerian people. And that document must pass through a referendum. And in that document, a land use act will become a thing of the past. And Nigerians can decide who owns land.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Shorere. Thank you very much. Mr. Dorotaye.
Well, good evening, everyone. And good evening to all Nigerians watching, both at home and in Dabsara. Thank you for the opportunity to share. My understanding of, of housing is best summarized in, in a philosophy. You either build homes or you build prisons. Because when people are homeless, it puts them on the street, it leads to crime and crime will eventually find new homes for them in prisons. The only problem with prison is that they don't pay rent. So if it was, if they were, you got them houses, they would grow, they would pay, they would pay rent. And so for me, I've also believed that homeownership is one of the most important things to have a sense of citizenship. In a nation where the people don't own homes, they don't feel like they are part of that country. They don't feel like nationals. And therefore, it's easy for them to relocate to any other country that they want. One of the first things that happens when Nigerians relocate abroad is they first of all buy houses. And that makes them have a sense of belonging. So the first thing I'm going to do in a FALAGRO trade-led administration come May 29, 2019, is to declare a state of emergency on housing. And make sure that we put together all the stakeholders to come together and have a national housing vision that says we want to make sure every Nigerian has access to cheap, affordable, safe, attractive and most importantly, functional homes. How do we get that done? It's what we'll put together, get all the legislators together, get all the, 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 the mind, the brilliant minds, both at home and in Dabsara. But the most important thing is, we've got to bring the people together, share the vision, and they will create.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorotaye. Thank you.
It's working? Good evening, everyone. We have, in our four-year programme, we have a policy called Operation Access Nigeria. Nigeria right now is not accessible because our land is in the hands of few cronies through the Land Use Act. Materials for housing is one of our problems. If you are on level one to five, you can only access less than 1 million naira to build a house. If you are between level five and level 10, you can only access 1.5 million naira. Every state in this federation, they will tell you that.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is a categorical, where it's going to be a categorical statement from a candidate. So I'm going to ask the question and you're going to tell me whether your government will, you know, it's a yes or a no. Currently, housing is bundled, the Ministry of Housing is bundled with work, power and, um, work and power essentially. So in your government, will you prioritize housing with a separate ministry and a strong framework for implementation in line with SDG 11 that has categorical targets and indicators? I start with Mr. Oshitelu. Yes or no? No. No, thank you. Mr. Dorotaye?
Yes.
Shorere? Dr. Obi? Professor Kingzmi?
The easiest question in the world, yes.
Thank you very much. So housing is going to be a priority for all our candidates. Fantastic. Which brings me to the next question. The 1999 Nigerian constitution, chapter 2, section 16D, guarantees the right to suitable and adequate housing for all Nigerians. What would you do to protect this right, especially for vulnerable people? Women, those living in informal communities, people living with disabilities and those currently in internal displaced, uh, currently internally displaced Nigerians? So we start from the centre of the room and then we go ahead. So we start from Mr. Shorere. Two minutes.
That particular section of the Nigerian constitution suffers a major defect. And that is, that right is not accessible. You cannot go to court to sue the Nigerian government if you have no home. So that is why I say that Nigerian constitution of 1999 is a fraudulent document created by the military and imposed on us. What we need to do is to make housing a right for our people in the country, in this country. That government must invest in shelter, that every Nigerian citizen must be entitled to a place to lay their head at night, a home. And we have to make the investment. And what I'm proposing, what our government will do, is to put aside 3.6 billion dollars. And I mean this, we should turn this country into a construction site where we are building homes until, at least, now that Nigeria has a home. We are in need of 17 million homes. Over 80 million Nigerians are without homes. What we do, we set the standard that an average of five Nigerians should be entitled to a house with father, a mom and at least three kids. And the moment we do that, then we'll be talking about all the chapters of our constitutional guarantees, the right to shelter, without making the investment, without building homes, without making policies, I'm not talking about mountain, you know, policies. Look, our problem in Nigeria is that the rich, the 1% of our population already have too many houses. Some of them.
Thank you. Mr. Shorere, thank you.
Some of them own villages, they own cities.
Thank you. So invite Professor Monogatari to tell us how he will protect the rights of vulnerable Nigerians to adequate housing.
Hello? Is it working? Yeah. Okay, very good. Um, my government will protect the rights of citizens to adequate housing by pursuing a very aggressive policy of social housing, number one. And that will be achieved by making sure that we bring innovation to housing construction. One of the challenges that will always arise with the wishes of any government is custom. How much does it cost to build a good social house? So we're going to begin technology. The Ministry of Science and Technology will be tasked to develop materials that will develop social housing at one-third of the cost of what is the same. That's number one. Number two, we will need to make a decision as to whether we need to pursue social housing in terms of expansion across the land or moving up, because you have to think four. Number three, number three, we have to have a serious policy about slums. We must improve our slums, not seek to eradicate them so that they become posh new residences for the wealthy, as we saw in Morocco. We saw it in Morocco, but we need to bring adequate water and sewage management to slums. As the Rockefeller Foundation says, if you do this, the shark becomes a house eventually, the slum becomes a suburb. Thank you.
Thank you. So we move the mic across to Mr. Oshitelu.
What we are going to do is, we will embrace social housing as well, but we will regenerate the slums. By regenerating the slums, we are not going to embark on what is currently being done, where they will remove people and snatch their houses and never bring them back. When, when you are going to regenerate, we will relocate them and then give them the first right to refuse to come back. Because they are already in that community. If they want to live in that community, they should be allowed to do so. And we will also engage in serious technology where, and we'll engage in subsidized housing. Because, let us be real, the teeming population that cannot really afford the houses, no matter what we do, even if we build them two bedrooms or one bedroom, it is still not going to be accessible to them. So our government will air-mark certain amount of money and we know exactly where to get this money from. Because we would take the money from stopping the subsidy on imported Finnish petroleum products.
Thank you. So we move the mic across to the lady, Dr. Obi. But I'm happy to see that our candidate understand that prostitution is not an option. And that's very good. Dr. Obi, over to you.
The number one thing that we have to understand is that housing is an important part of lifting people out of poverty. The major thing to do is to ensure that people have income that enables them to be housed or those who rent houses on a long-term and sustainable basis. So an economy that enables improvement in income is fundamental. Number two, don't clap so that I can use my cane well. Number, number, number two, is that in the development and design of social housing, we must understand how the. how the right policy triggers a stronger participation of the private sector in the provision of social housing. Number three. Number three, we must look at our slum environments from the perspective of economic corridors. If we look at them as economic corridors, it completely shifts the way that we treat the poor who are co-located in a virus that are even detrimental to the achievement of our societal development goals. So my final take on this is to say that tackling poverty is hugely tied, according to research, to what we do with housing for the poorer segment of our society.
Thank you. And finally, to Sela.
All right. As I said at the beginning, the first thing we're going to do is to declare a state of emergency on housing. And with that, we would also have what we call a National Emergency Housing Fund to the tune of a trillion naira, which comes from
to be solved, it's a societal problem that needs to be solved. So we're going to see how we're going to drive and inspire the private sector and ordinary citizens to work together. And a practical example of the kind of thing I'm talking about was something, a project we did in 1999 called Musheni Makeover. Some of you may remember that. Um, it's a project where we mobilized over 2,000 people to paint 296 houses in Musheni, places where they couldn't afford to, to, to paint themselves, so we could uplift that place. And of course, that was very helpful. The first thing that we want to do is to have shelters. And those shelters are going to be places where homeless people can go and stay for one night if they are willing to be part of a skills acquisition program. So if you are willing to be part of a skills acquisition program, you have a tent, you can go and stay in that place. But that way, you are going to be able to earn your way out of being able to stay there for one night. Before they go to bed, each one of them must sleep, uh, must take a bath so that they are able to lie down on the bed and they will remain clean. So that's one of the most important things. Last one is new cities. We're going to build new cities.
I think, I think, thank you. I think our, our friend, our Dr. D, I think, I think we're enjoying the conversation. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, for those of you watching online, we have, um, four hashtags: housing markets, town hall meeting, hashtag town hall, and at chsz underscore unilab, which is a Twitter handle. Okay, great. We'll move on to the value chain that is also, uh, we have considered an important part, which is housing finance. Today in the country, various mortgage products are continuously promoted by both the government and the private sector. Okay? So in government, you have, um, the, the Federal Savings Home Loans Board. You have the Federal Mortgage Bank of Nigeria. Across the private sector, you have several mortgage banks. But with all of these, mortgage still remains elusive in the country. It almost seems, or it, it, there is a systematic problem. So as the president of this country, how can we deliver a mortgage system that captures our local realities and exigencies? Especially in the terms of the deficits that we all know. So I'll start with Professor Molela.
Hello? Thank you. Um, as Deputy Governor of the Central Bank of Nigeria, I approve, uh, the license of the Nigerian Mortgage Refinance Corporation. It has done a few things, but not enough. As President of Nigeria, I encourage a policy shift. The problem with mortgages in this country is that the only people who are getting them are those who are already rich. The mortgage system is not addressing the lower-middle class and the poor. So we are going to have to add more capital for mortgage refinance in Nigeria. One of the ways we are going to do that, I propose that the New Development Bank of Nigeria should be completely changed in terms of its mandate. It is doing something which I believe that the 1 trillion naira venture capital fund I propose should do, which is investing in small businesses. That New Development Bank of Nigeria should be like DNBES in Brazil. It should be the mega development bank for the country and have a first-line charge on the consolidated revenue fund. Part of what it should be doing is to be funding the refinancing of mortgages so that there can be some sort of subsidized mortgage support for poorer people in the society to be able to access affordable housing, not just giving mortgages to those who are upper-middle class and wealthy people. So I will take a more socially responsible, uh, approach to mortgage financing in Nigeria. It doesn't exist right now. It's a game for the upper-middle class at its front.
Thank you very much. Dr. Idris, I'd like to hear next.
You know, one of the things I would never want to do as a candidate is to raise expectations that ultimately will not be realized. Because it's important to be that way. So the first thing that I need to say is that there is a huge component in the housing conversation that the market can take care of. And then we must identify this segment of it that you need a subsidization. But the subsidization must be done in a way that is market efficient. So the work that we would do in terms of refinancing is that we would shape policies that would enable pre-financing and refinancing in the way that the market sees the incentive for the volume of business that is possible by targeting the people who are at the bottom of the pyramid. What that does is that it inspires entry into the sector by capital that was stranded, unable to find where to reside. So the deepening of our country's financial sector, especially through the capital markets, is going to be tied to that opportunity that the private sector will see in housing while the government offends through efficient subsidies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The big elephant in the room is that you have poor people in this country, you have workers who are poorly paid, and nobody is talking about incentivizing workers to be able to afford houses. What I'm going to do is to increase the salary of an average Nigerian worker, minimum wage would be 100,000 naira. Listen to me, listen to me. 100,000 naira. Listen to me, don't buy into my time. Uh, don't bite into my time, please. Out of that 100,000 naira, I am going to make sure that an average Nigerian worker can get 2 million naira mortgage loan. Every year, 20% can be invested back in back your and well with your mortgage. Listen to me, if you're doing well with your mortgage, you can refinance the mortgage to do other life, including sending your children to school where you probably cannot compete with the rich. You can even go on vacation after you get a second mortgage loan. Isn't it interesting that I'm the geographer here and I have a better agenda than the economy to talk before me? You know? The truth here is that nobody, nobody is talking about empowering the Nigerian masses so that they can be eligible to take mortgage. If you go to the Federal Mortgage Bank of Nigeria, the collateral, they will ask you, you will never come back there again on to me. Yeah, we have to see. Yeah. We have to have a policy where go prioritize mortgage for low-income workers. And the best way to do it is to give them a minimum wage as a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shoray. Uh, before, before Mr. Duroto, you go ahead, I would like to address two key issues, Mr. Shoray. One, the Federal Mortgage Bank of Nigeria has a much requirement, while not advocating or being an attorney for them, has the normal requirement for asserting a mortgage loan. And then, you know, and then secondly, I like the fact that you will increase minimum wage to 100,000. My worry is, how do you manage the other side of inflation? Sorry, sorry, sorry. During, if we have time, you'll come to that. But I'm just saying you should put that in perspective because there will be, um,
If you, if you want to throw yourself into that, you got to let me address it. Because the issue of inflation is something that has been around to prevent workers from getting their due for a long time. The question you should ask yourself, what was the inflation caused by all the, you know, subsidized frauds that happened? 6.2 billion dollars were stolen by
Okay, okay, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Duroto. Please, please come back, please come back. Sela, Mr. Duroto.
Ladies and gentlemen.
It's Wagner.
Hello? 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 Please, let us remember the house rules. There will be time for us to ask questions and then hear them preach like a pastor. But for now, let's continue to maintain their promise so that they can give us what they have for us. And you remember that we also have some special guests in the house that we are here to recognize, who are also going to weigh in as far as Lagos is concerned. So please, let us maintain their promise while I hand you over to you.
Thank you very much, uh, Sela. Go ahead.
All right. So just to bring a reminder to the question is, how do we make mortgage financing available to all? That's the simplicity of what it is that we've said. And in a sense, cheaper mortgage financing. Many of the speakers ahead, my co-candidates, have already spoken about the fact that a significant portion of what it is that we have that, that the players in the market today are people who already can afford mortgage finance. So there must be that part of the, like I said, collective social responsibility, which for most companies will come as corporate social responsibility. So many of the companies today are doing different kinds of social response, socially responsible projects. We are going to be asking as many companies as possible to invest in social housing. And we will provide matching funds from our National Emergency Housing Fund. That also will then work with what I call diaspora funding. We need to get the diasporans who are currently, uh, earning enough. And most of them looking for ways to save their money and also have a sense of belonging in Nigeria to have protected housing in estates. That we would provide infrastructure, we will provide power, we would provide roads, water, and all of those things. And ask them to invest in those protected housing so that they are able to do so with little or no, uh, stress about having to build themselves. So the two things, the last one very quickly, is that we have a stock of empty and abandoned buildings all across Nigeria. And we have some people estimating the region of 100,000 empty buildings. We need to, to create a policy that says, if nobody claims those buildings and can say you will have a finishing point, Nigeria will take those empty houses and we will make them available to the people who cannot afford them so that they can use them.
Thank you very much.
I have a different approach to the mortgage system. The mortgage system is very foreign to Nigeria, even to those who have access to it. So even for the American refugees that are just coming out of school, uh, the mortgage system is still foreign to them. So what we are going to do, uh, I'm not of the, I'm a builder. I know how to build and we are going to build this nation. But the present approach is not working. This system whereby we're using, uh, Wall Street economy doesn't work. Our banks have failed this country woefully, including the central bank. And that's why you still have in all the markets, people doing contributions and you have competitors. What we will do, we will incorporate it into a mortgage system where the professionals in the building industries, especially the quantities of vehicles. Because the pride of a Nigerian is to own his own home. And it doesn't take, it takes pride in building it systematically. We need to work with the people. The system that we are trying to bring is so foreign and people have resisted and government is not listening. We are going to listen. We will make sure that the system where the people wanted is what we are going to do so that everybody can take pride in owning a home and building it in a way that they will have the pride and if it's still to be built within maybe six months or 10 months or 12 months, where the banks will be the custodian
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question we have for the, um, candidates is more on practicality. A lot of research and lived experiences shows that the bureaucracy in government tends to be problematic. And so people don't take approval because the, the process is chaotic, it's stressful. And then there are so many agencies doing the same thing that one tends to get confused as to what to do. How will you go about streamlining the process? That's one. And the second one is, how will you synergize the activities of the various ministries and agencies of governments that are invested in various stages of the housing value chain? So I start from, would you like to start? Yes.
At the core of every development activity must be a compelling vision. And when people see the benefit of that vision, it's easy for them to connect with it. The LAGRA and Alliance for New Nigeria-led Government will share the vision of doubling our building capacity in every year, starting year one with 250,000 houses, year two with 500,000, year three with 1 million, and year four with 2 million houses. Meaning that in the first four years of our administration, we're committing to seeing construction of 3.75 million houses. Now, the thing is bringing everybody to the table. States, local government, and the private sector, especially even with the development agencies, to come and say how we each and everyone has a part to play in naturalizing that goal. Especially when you spell what you would call the ripple effect on the economy. When, when you talk about everything that will happen when the private sector is in factories and all of those things that need So the first most important thing in streamlining and getting all the, the, the agencies involved, the second thing is we must set a processing goal that says whatever application you set to, within 30 days, it must be resolved. And that must be done within our first year. Every application must be resolved within 30 days. And then everybody must find out what do we cut off, how do we cut it off? And that's basically what it will happen.
Thank you. I think, um, Mr. Oshitelu wants to go next? Okay.
Question that we have asked. Uh, being a civil servant, worked in the Ministry of Housing before myself. So I know exactly, uh, what you are talking about. The problem is not, uh, maybe 50% is in The problem is not, maybe fifty percent is in the approval process. But the biggest problem is, as I said before, Nigeria is not accessible. Because not every land in this country has been surveyed. Not, so therefore, for somebody that wants to buy a piece of land, he's not even sure what to buy. That's why you see, ten, one hominid selling a piece of land to ten people. So what do the ordinary man do to avoid is, is that building? And one thing that government can do is, is always there. Even in the state everywhere, is government is always catching up. Instead of government to encourage the citizens to have those infrastructures ahead of building. So whenever you are building a new particular land or a new activity anywhere, you will discover that it is going to become a song at the end of the day. Because the necessary infrastructures are not done for. And this is what I call taking care of the small things so that those small things can take care of the big things. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Okay.
In twenty-five years, the National Housing Fund, which is part of the national, the mortgage, the federal government's mortgage bank, has only been able to create about seventeen thousand housing units. In twenty-five years. Now, this is a fact, you can check it out. It is a spectacular failure of political will. Let me give you an example. When Jaconde was the governor of Lagos State, we saw what he was able to do with housing in this state. When Fashallah was the governor, there was progress in some other areas, but it didn't look as if there was so much progress in housing. Today, housing is one of a super ministry of about three or four impossible mandates. The first thing as president of Nigeria is that I will separate housing from those three other mandates and make it housing and urban development. Number two, all the institutions in the value chain, I don't see in the current housing, you know, policy architecture, which one has a strong regulatory role over building standards in this country and just making sure that housing policy is executed. The problem in this country is that there's no regulation of anything. There's no regulation of hospitals. There's no regulation of schools in terms of standards. There's no regulation of housing in terms of standards. Or if there is, nobody respects it and there is no consequence. Regulatory policy is important. Making sure that whichever institution is in charge of anything, delivers on its mandate is important. That is a performance management issue. Performance management will be one of the prime issues, one of the major offices of my presidency.
Thank you. So, Dr. Obi.
So, the problem of excessive bureaucracy and regulation is what the housing sector is going through. And so the most important thing is... The most important thing is going to be to get the data that tells us where we are in terms of this overregulation and... Oga, don't clap too much, you will eat into my time. So we know that it takes right now twenty-one days for the processes of registration to happen. We know that it takes about two hundred and seventy-four days for the entire gamut of what you need to do in transfer of titles and things like that to happen. We have to set process targets, one. Number two is that there is something called blockchain technologies. What blockchain technology is doing in terms of digitization process is unbelievable. It removes too much human interaction and therefore saves the housing sector from the major harm that we see in the bureaucratic process that isn't the value chain. And then number four is that the connectivity between all that we do with housing to the wider economy will also help us reduce the duplication that happens in the value chain. So we don't look at housing as an insular sector. We look at it as a connector sector. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will be running a government that's allergic to bureaucracy. And I mean that part of the problem that our housing sector has is that we also do not have documentation. Proper documentation, the processing of this documentation, you can almost go around Lagos and not know, except you are lucky, the documentation of any particular house. And I said it as a journalist. There was a time a pastor bought a house for a prostitute. I mean, and I was trying to find the documentation. And I couldn't find it in Lagos. I used everything I can. They said you have to see somebody somewhere before you can get the documentation. The reason is that nobody wants you to know what is going on in this country with regards to how houses are built, who owns houses. Because most of the houses you have in Nigeria are owned by just a few people. And we also have to have a transparent land registry system in Nigeria. In the UK, that was how a Sahar reporter that was able to catch a lot of tips because they have a central land registry. If you know their address, you will know the owner of the house and how much they pay for the house and how much it is worth. You have to be able to do that in Nigeria. Without this, we can't even start to plan. And don't forget, with due respect, I studied geography and planning at the University of Lagos. I never intended to be a journalist. And my hope is that as president, we will replan this country completely from the bottom. And have a future that of course is digitalized. Yes. Digitized, sorry. Digitized.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Shoray. Still on governance issues. Now Lagos State is the economic hub for Nigeria, as we all know. And it was the federal capital territory until nineteen ninety-one. So there were a lot of significant federal governments, lands, and administrative properties in the state. Today, these properties are abandoned. And their total value runs in billions of naira. If elected president, how would your office facilitate the release, reuse, remodeling, and redevelopment of these properties in such a way that it will increase the national housing stock? So I'll start from, oh, okay, okay, you can start.
The reason I wanted, I wanted to go first on this is that this was an issue that a policy pronouncement and design was already done sometime in the administration that I was part of. What is it that creates an incentive for the next administration to abandon a policy progress? Because that has become a problem, what I would do is to not even waste time. So the first thing that we must acknowledge is that our total budget now, two thousand and nineteen, is just thirty billion dollars. It is not even equivalent to the budget of the New York Fire Service. So we need all the resources we can find. Therefore, there wouldn't be any kind of time lag in getting the diagnostic on the existing houses of the federal government in Lagos State and immediately doing a conversion program for the private sector and public use of the kind that ensures higher productivity of earning for our country.
Thank you very much.
I will not give any more of our public institutions to the private sector. They're hard enough. And what I'm going to do is to do an inventory of what is left of federally owned properties in Lagos. And the ones that we can convert to schools, we convert it to schools. The ones that we can convert to houses, we convert it to houses and give them back to workers. I would love to convert the federal secretariat to a hospital in Lagos. Yes. Instead of dachshunds to corporatives and levers. The federal government of Nigeria is a whistle government. If we convert this to private use, you are, it's going to end up in the hands of our ministers, governors, party leaders, national leaders of some of these political parties who are based in Lagos, like the Jagavan in Lagos here, who you don't want to give any more of our properties, Nigerian properties to be used by the Nigerian people, period. And we don't even have enough space to take care of our social needs. We can't give any more of our properties to the private sector. In fact, I will be looking at how we can get some of the things that were sold to them at below market price back to the Nigerian people.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Who's going next?
Like I said a little earlier before, there is a stock of abandoned houses in Nigeria that has to be put up. And so we're going to set up a board specifically to look, and this will be set up with some of the most reputable people. That it will be like something like your shopping, but exactly what do we have on ground and what is the best use that we can put it through? Some of that use, like has been said, would be hospitals. Some of it will be offices. But another interesting thing that we can do is we can actually give these buildings to developers who will be able to let and rent them out so that we can have returns on the investment that the government has already made into it. So those, listen, there's so many people today that want offices. Young people that are looking for offices that are cheap and affordable. And then you have the federal secretariat there in Iqoeyi, and it's empty. Like, like my brother said, it's filled with corporatives and levers. Yes, there are people that are looking for offices. They are willing to pay rent on them. We will make sure that we find a way to commercialize every building, either by renting them out or leasing them out on long-term lease. This is what it is, so that we can earn money on the return, on all the investments that is in the past.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duroto. Mr. Shoray.
My approach is going to be very different, but it's close to what you have said. I would prefer to use all those buildings, take the stock, and use them as upgraded student accommodation.
Thank you. Thank you, Prof.
Thank you. Hello, is this working? Hello? Is it working? Hello? Yeah, okay, good. My approach would be very simple. Depending on where the abandoned federal property is in Lagos. That is what should influence what you want to use that property for. You bring in the experts. Some of it should be used for social housing. Some of it can be used for private sector developments for offices. It's a combination, but it depends on and what ground... Because that type of... You don't go and build a house in a state in the middle of a commercial office development area. So I think the location is what will determine the use. It's a mix of social housing, public use, and private sector development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have had an interesting evening. And please give a round of applause to all the candidates. We have also had quite some engagement from social media. And the guys on Twitter have been sending in questions and comments. So you can always check the hashtag. And so now we are rounding up. And we'll just want to give an opportunity to one of the governorship candidates who is in the house, Babasunde Olalirik Badamoti of the ADP, to say one word, one minute, please. Yes, one minute. One minute concerning housing in Lagos.
Thirty-five years ago, Alagila Sisjafunde built twenty thousand affordable housing units in four years and three months in this same Lagos state. Since then, construction technology has moved on in leaps and bounds. And in the next four years, we will be delivering a minimum. And this is all about managing expectations. A minimum of forty thousand affordable housing units, ten thousand affordable housing units, year on year. It is clear that we have land limitations in Lagos state. So we're not going to be doing ten floors, fifteen floors. Minimum twenty floors. Minimum one-bedroom flats, two-bedroom flats. Because of our demographics, seventy percent of our population are people between the ages of thirty-five and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Badamoti. Your one minute is up.
Okay, so thank you very much, sir. As a final word, as a final word, we are just going to ask each of our presidential candidates to give us their final word. Please, one minute, thirty seconds to one minute, please. We'll start from Professor Murala.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think, thank you for this discussion. I think it's been wonderful. I think the question of housing is important for Nigeria for three reasons. One, developing the housing sector is important for inclusive growth. All the spinoffs of housing construction, masons, laborers, electricians, they all get more work and they all earn income if we develop our housing sector. That's number one. Developing the housing sector is very important as a way to diversify Nigeria's economy. That's also very, very important. So I think that housing is certainly something that should become a priority. It is also a priority because developing our housing sector will be one of the ways to fight corruption in this country. One of the things that gives rise to corruption in the public service is the fear of growing old and not having a roof over your head. So developing housing is part of fighting corruption. So I'd like to say that housing is a very important priority for this country and certainly will be in my presidency.
Thank you very much, Professor Murala. Dr. Obi.
The startup program, which looks at what a standard housing opportunity should be for the poor...